In order to advance the public health goal, limiting face-to-face meetings, also called social distancing, an effort to slow the spread of COVID-19 pandemic. This is an open meeting conducted by video conference. There is no public access to City Hall or physical location. In terms of citizen comments, Kristen, if I'm, if I read everything correct, we have no citizen comments. Is that correct?
Correct, sir. There are no comments.
Thank you very much. Recording this video will be made available to the public in accordance with the Open Meetings Act upon written request. So we have, I've called to order our city council meeting as of 6 o'clock. And Mr. Zoka, Planning and Zoning Commission Chair, if you want to call your meeting to order, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, and Council, thank you. At 6:01, we'll go ahead and call the Planning and Zoning Commission's special meeting with the City Council, virtual meeting via video teleconference for Monday, January 11, 2021. We have all but one member present at this time. We have one, so we can proceed.
I've made a checklist of folks that, okay, Eric Pena is on, I see Eric. Okay, so you're missing Richard Shaw at the moment, as I see.
Yeah, he was on the last meeting. He should be showing up shortly.
Okay. And we will not have Councilmember McNerney or Councilmember Harvey joining us tonight from City Council. So item number three, oh, well, before we get into that, just want to wish everybody, I know it's, this is the first time we've gotten together since Christmas or before Christmas, so I hope that you had a happy and peaceful holiday and hope that your New Year's is underway in a calm and peaceful mode as well. We are still dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic and the vaccination process is underway. You may see different aspects of it being reported by the media. As we know it, things are a little incomplete, as we can see them here in Dallas County at the moment, but we are waiting to receive information from County Judge Jenkins and our emergency management coordinator as we proceed on that, just in case anybody is curious about that. So we will get underway with our zoning ordinance survey update. And that's the purpose for tonight's meeting. All City Council members and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission have been provided with the information beforehand. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to review that so that we can limit how much time Daniel and, okay, Eric, Erica is here as well, Eric Craycroft from FNIA, as they say it in their PowerPoint, Freezer Nichols. So Daniel and Erica are available for us to go through. One thing I would make a note on, you know, looking at that and seeing the information that's been provided there, in terms of my comments, looking at that data, we had 92 participants, and those participants were graduated in different tiers in terms of their residency and their businesses conducted in our city, in addition to some of the items that they wanted to put a different weight on. And it was interesting to see the matrix that FNIA provided to us, and that was on page two of the data that was provided to us in terms of how things were more weighted in with our citizens' comments. The number one weighted input was encouraging development in downtown Duncanville, and that was the weighted average was 2.58. I don't believe it's really necessary to go into methodology on how that matrix was calculated. It's just okay for us to go to that last number on the far right-hand side, if that's okay with you, Daniel and Erica. The statistical algorithms behind all that are not really, just to us, just how you got there. If you want to explain maybe a little bit about, you know, is there a statistical, how should I say, is there a significant statistical difference between 2.58 and 2.48 when it comes to looking at that information, when we might want to get into that when we get there? And the other question I have, when we get to it, on page nine, looking at that, those notes that you have there, quite frankly, I don't understand them. So when we get there, if you could explain that, I really don't understand the application of height articulation or depth articulation. So those applications and terms are foreign to me, maybe to others as well. So when we get to that point, I'd appreciate some explanation when we get there. So with that, I will turn it over to Daniel and Erica, and we will get underway. It's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I will go ahead and share my screen. And hopefully, everyone can see. Go ahead and move into the agenda. We have a concise PowerPoint here for you to take you through this agenda, where we'll just take real quickly a look at where we are in the process, then we're going to dive into the open house input. We'll look at the results from the open house and the survey, then we'll talk a little bit on direction and final revisions, and then also next steps. So that's really what we're looking at today, as was in the agenda, looking at the input from the open house and surveys. So process overview. You remember, really just, we have three parts to this project. We're in the last phase, and we have it highlighted there in blue towards the bottom. It's our joint workshop that we're working on today. And what we'll do moving on after today is tentatively what we have on the schedule is a P&amp;Z public hearing in February and also a council public hearing in February. That's assuming we want to move forward with how it is laid out, the zoning ordinance is currently laid out. Of course, if we want to have revisions, those are definitely, we incorporate those into, into the document. So moving on to the open house and how that all, how all that unfolded. So on November 19th, so right before Thanksgiving, we had our open house. It was a live 30-minute presentation, and we had a Q&amp;A afterwards. And so all that was recorded and posted on the website. So all in all, 198 viewers, so almost 200 people. We had 20 people on the Zoom call that night, 88 people, or 88 views on YouTube, and then 90 clicks on Facebook is, is the different breakdown to the different platforms. Then we had the website where we had our, our survey, which was a three-question survey, which was, we have three questions, but they were detailed and had subparts. We had that up for four weeks, from November 9th to December 7th, so we had that for four weeks. We also had hard copies available at the City Hall and the library. They were in English and Spanish, and we had 94 responses to the survey. And that rolled up into the memo that Mayor, you were, you were looking at and have those responses in. So highlighting those questions, we'll actually start at the, with the last question, because that really was our demographic question, because we asked the demographics at the end. So you could see here on the chart, someone was able to, and you could select multiple choices. So I live in Duncanville, and maybe I own rental property in Duncanville. So there, you could select more than one. So that's why our numbers don't equal 100%. They're actually a little over 100%. But we can see with our first answer, I live in Duncanville, 82 people responded that they lived in the city. So that's 82 out of our 94 responses, so 88%, almost 90% of the people taking the survey reported that they lived in the city. We had about 25%, so about a quarter work in Duncanville. Owning a business, 7.5%. Living outside, we only have three people marking that. I have a different type of interest in Duncanville, so that's just what they're, what they're marking. We just had one person respond that way. And we had four individuals indicating that they owned rental, rental property. And then on the left side of the screen, you can just sort of see some, some of our notes that we wanted to pull out, that we thought should be interested in. Of all the four respondents who owned rental property, those, they also checked that they lived in the city, because we had discussed that, you know, at our previous meetings, sort of wanting to know that, that dynamic. Of the 12 who didn't select, I live in Duncanville, so what did those people who don't live in the city, how are they sort of involved? Eight of them say they work in the city. One owns a business, one has a different type of interest, and just two completely skip, skip that question on there. So that's sort of the 12 people who didn't live in the city. That's how, how their interests were aligned. So we have a matrix here, and this was the first question. And if you remember, we talked about rating your level of concern. And so you have three options. We had five, five categories here. One, not being concerned, two was neutral, and three was most concerned. And that the way we, we weighted this, you can sort of look at it on that far right column. You can see the higher the number, the, the, the stronger the response is indicated. And you can see as in 60, we had 60 people marked that that was the most important to them. And then our second, 60% was encouraging, or 60 people were saying encouraging development in downtown Duncanville was the, their most concern. Then we had promoting environmentally friendly, that was 53. So we're going to sort of take a look at those two, because we wanted to pull those out, because we, like I said, 60 people on that first one and 53 on the second one were saying this is out of the most concern. So that, those are really the highest rated in there. And then we jump down to 40 people. So we go from 53 down to 40. So, so there's a pretty good, good jump when we get down to our third scoring, our third rated response. So on the screen here, you can see that encouraging development in downtown Duncanville was, was our top, our, our, our top vote getter on what is most, people are most concerned about. And so, and they're concerned about encouraging development. And so we take a look at, how are we encouraging development? So we are encouraging development in downtown Duncanville by reducing the parking in the district. We don't have parking standards in, in the core district, but we do have a 50% requirement of the parking in the urban living and the general main street. Because if you remember, in downtown Duncanville, you have those sub-districts, and we reduce that, reduce that to three on there. So we, so we think that is encouraging development. We also have smaller setbacks and greater lot coverage permitted compared, compared to other districts. So there's a lot, a lot of flexibility as far as the building footprint and design goes. So we're thinking that is also encouraging development. So, because once again, we want to align, you know, what we're doing in zoning with, with the feedback that we're getting. So how might the new zoning ordinance might discourage development in Dun Town, downtown Duncanville? And so maybe some developers aren't as familiar with form-based code regulations. So, you know, that could be sometimes a discouragement for some, saying, maybe this is too complex. I'm just familiar with regular zoning. I don't really, you know, I have difficulty figuring out this form-based code. So that, that could be seen as a discouragement, not completely for everyone, but, but by some. And then also, we do require quality development standards in downtown, and some people may see that as discouraging development, because any time you, you're, you're setting a bar for, for people to meet, you know, sometimes, some people won't be able to meet those, or a development project won't be able to meet those. And so, so that could be seen as discouraging development. But we think, we do have that in line with where our input has us going and through our discussions previously. The next one I wanted to talk about was the second highest scoring is promoting environmentally friendly development. And so we look at ways of how are we, so this is important to people, how are we encouraging this? We do allow smaller residential building footprints, reducing the number of parking spaces that are required in the opportunity area, so you can preserve more of that as open space and those elements. Parking lots must have curbs that allow the parking lot to drain into landscaping, so as a way to help filter the runoff from parking lots. So, so that's one way that that's addressed. And also, we have alternative compliance to deviate from some of the landscaping requirements to achieve a more sustainable design. So we have some, some flexibility in those, those areas to help encourage environmentally friendly development. If we take a look at it, and someone would say, well, how might the new zoning ordinance might discourage environmentally friendly development? You know, we can take a look at our permeable parking surfaces. Those are the pavement that sort of allows for the infiltration of the water. We currently don't allow that for the required parking spaces or driveways. That could, and, and so the only place where we have our permeable parking services is places that are in excess of our required parking or our fire lanes. And so, you know, someone could take a look at that and say, well, you know, could, could some more be done as permeable pavement? So that was one way to, to take a look at some of the responses, because once again, when we look at these, as these are being the most important responses we're seeing, you know, how are we encouraging this? And how might the new zoning be discouraging these types of developments? The second question we had was more open-ended to please list any suggestions or improvements to the zoning ordinance or map that they, they feel like was important to them and to be addressed. And so we had 41 responses. So we, we put that into some common themes, and number one was, you know, opposition to apartments. Why the, the draft zoning ordinance doesn't change where apartments are allowed, because we don't have any necessary re-zonings that, that are occurring on the map. That's seen as, we documented that's a response, but we're not necessarily changing anything about where those apartments would, would be located. Number two was discouraging on-street parking. So we have this in some of the residential areas. So, so the draft does require additional off-street parking to try to get those vehicles off, off the street and onto, onto property. Number three is we had more flexible regulations. So that was a theme that, that we saw in the responses. And so the draft zoning ordinance does include that built-in flexibility with that alternative compliance options that we have for different elements that could be administratively approved. Another thing that we got from the comments was increasing code enforcement. And while that's not necessarily a, a product inside the zoning itself, it is a, it is an outcome of how that zoning is, is enforced. So just recognizing that that's a concern, that people were putting in the comments, just knowing enforcement is, is, is a concern. And then this last one that we have is just better-looking development in general. People just want to see nice quality development. And we do, the draft ordinance, the draft zoning ordinance includes enhancements, but we were trying to think of, okay, this is a comment that we got, what, what, what could we tell the council in the P&amp;Z? It's like, okay, if we're, if we're looking at this, what can we try to do to address this comment of better-looking development? And then that's when we got to, Mayor, you were mentioning on page nine, some of the items that, that, that were in there. So to address this comment, we were just thinking, and this, this is just at a discussion stage, this is not in the draft zoning right now. So for all our non-residential in our neighborhood office and retail and local office and retail and our general office and retail, so in our non-residential districts, we could take a look at increasing the standards to go with that comment of better-looking development, because we have something called articulation for, for buildings. And so, and we have this for our mixed-use developments. And if you see that image on the right side of the slide, and you'll see that there's a building there. So I want you to think about articulation. It's like typically, we could just put a box as a building and just have, have, you know, four sides there. But here in this image, what that articulation means is, is the facade is going to increase in height. So you could see that there's a little height articulation. So it's just not one, one box, or there's a little bit more shape to it. So when the building increases in height, that's what we call height articulation. Or we could have depth articulation to a facade, and, and you could see sort of like that, that projection there on that building, so there's some, some depth to it. Why changes in state law have, have made it to, we can't necessarily prescribe the materials of a building to, to be used, articulation's still one of those, those elements that can be designed. So if we were wanting to say, how can we expand some concepts in here to, to, you know, try to raise a bar a little bit more, this is something that we can consider applying to, you know, a couple of other zoning districts. And so that was just one idea, and we could, we could talk about that. And then the other one was for multifamily development. If, if we wanted to, we could also require articulation to be done in our multifamily development. And if we wanted to increase the open space requirement, so, you know, when we're having, you know, multifamily developments, larger ones, 20, 20 dwelling units or more, you know, there's 8% is what we have drafted here, you know, of the entire site dedicated to recreational facilities, open spaces. So maybe this is children's play areas or a dog park that's specific to that multifamily area, picnic areas, swimming pools, elements like that would really go to the recreational element with inside that, that multifamily development. So that was, that was something we were seeing as, what are, we heard this as a theme, and, you know, just to sort of be proactive, to give you guys some, some things just to think about, this is one way that we could try to address that, if that's something that we wanted, wanted to do, to get that.
I want to ask you a question. Back there, you said NOAR is neighborhood, LOR is local.
Mm-hmm. And general office and retail, you said?
General, and then general office and retail?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and the L is local office?
Uh-huh. Local, so, so neighborhood is really the, the, the small scale that's really just going to be serviced by the people surrounding that area. So it's a really neighborhood-based. Local would be more, is what we'd see is, you're, you're driving anywhere from the city to it, and, and the general office and retail is, it's going to be a larger, could be a larger scale, but also could be just more general in nature. And so they shift from being a little bit, or being more restrictive the smaller you go, to being general retail is more, more open to, to more items, more uses.
So neighborhood, what's the O then?
Office and retail.
Neighborhood, office, retail, local office, retail, and general office, retail?
Yes. That is correct.
Okay. Oh, non-residential.
Correct, correct.
Sorry, I'm not familiar with your acronyms.
Oh, no, no problem. And so, and of course, we'll, we'll circle back to any of these that, that we'd like any slides. So, and we'll, we'll actually come back to this slide, because I just wanted to touch on the next step process slide, and then we'll come back and sort of get a little direction about, you know, do we, you know, what do we think about the results? You know, do we want to proceed with any revisions, whether they're the ones that we suggested, or there's anything else based upon what you hear as part of that feedback? So is there anything else that needs to be done before we're ready to move on to the public hearings? Because our next steps would be after tonight, and if you look down at that bottom blue text where it says P&amp;Z public hearing, moving on tonight, from tonight, we say we're in agreement moving forward, or we're agreement moving forward with these changes. What would a schedule look like? So we would have a P&amp;Z public hearing on potentially February 8th to consider a recommendation from the P&amp;Z, and then potentially going to the council for a public hearing and considering adoption late, later in the month of February. And we just have the draft date on there, 16th, but that could really be any date that works with, with your calendar on there. So, so that's what we're thinking moving forward. And then that's really the process that we see. But with that, I'll go back to this sort of direction slide and see, you know, are there any comments, any, any thoughts? I know we had some questions about where maybe some, some items came from. We can, we can pull up that memo if that's something that you'd like to see, or, or anything in the draft regulations as well.
Well, Daniel and Erica, I appreciate the overview, and I appreciate our citizens as well, with the 92 or 94 responses that we got and with their inputs. Having read all of them and visualized, and then having, but you put them into common themes as well, I think was very informative for us. The revisions that you've recommended, now that I understand them with the articulations, thinking about how that would work and, you know, for strip malls and so forth, I think that's a great improvement for what we have going in terms of both the, the vertical and the, what was the other one?
Depth.
The, the height, I'm sorry, not vertical, but the height articulation and the depth articulation. And one thing, I was trying to visualize the depth articulation. I understand with height, as it moves along, it could, it could step up, but then it could also step down every 50 feet. But with depth articulation, somebody wants to just put something out there, let's say it's like a, a two-foot pillar-like thing that you've got there. Do those have to increase in size as it goes every 30 feet, or that just means one of those articulations is installed every 30 feet?
It, it can, it can, it can vary. We, we can, we can write it where it'd be sort of a repetition of something like you'd see that, that column there, that's a part of that building. Or it could be, if it was more like a, sort of a strip retail, it may be the entrances are pulled out a little bit. Because, because what we would try to be doing in the zoning is to provide the greatest flexibility for the developer, because our concern from what we get from the citizens is wanting nicer-looking buildings. So we're just trying to avoid a straight box that someone's putting, but we still want to give the developer enough flexibility to say, okay, I can, I can meet this articulation requirement by doing this or that. So, so having that general standard there is, is, is a pretty good one to have to try to produce that result.
So we don't want any more specificity than what this is to allow that flexibility for the developer?
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay. All right, any other input?
Hey, Daniel, let me, let me ask this. This, this may, may and may not go with what you're proposing. Does those lighting at all go with any of the proposed, or is that something we regulate ourselves? And I'm particularly talking about lighting on the building.
We, we do have the lighting standards in there, but as far as, as far as, are you talking about?
The outside of the building. In other words, I guess what I'm thinking of, it looks great in the daytime, and of course, I'm just wondering, do we, could we require, or does it happen that we, we have required some lighting on the outside of the, particular lighting on outside the building that will project this building at night as well? Again, I'm not sure that's part of this, but I just wanted to ask for my know.
From, as far as the lighting requirements in general, we typically don't prescribe that you have to have all this lighting on your building. What the, the lighting standards that, that we have in place are more for making sure they're full cutoff light fixtures. So the, the, the light is being cast down rather than trying to, you know, they, they call it light pollution, where you just see like a whole area that's lit up extremely bright, or it's shining into a neighboring property. So the more, the, the light regulations that we have in there, or maybe it's the height of a, a light pole, those are the type of regulations, rather than necessarily saying you have to have X amount of lights on your building, just to make sure it's, it's not, not dark. So, because the, the zoning would say, if you wanted to have your building basically dark, you could. Where the, the lighting regulations would be more prohibitive against just trying to be overburdening to neighbors and trying to minimize those impacts.
Yeah, no, I was, I was just thinking about highlighting the building, the buildings itself as they build them.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Anderson, you had a hand up?
Yeah, it's, piggybacking onto what Councilman Cooks is talking about. Daniel, isn't there some, isn't there some precedent out there set of lighting where you could say it's all downlighting? You know, where some, some people are doing, you know, no-up lighting for more light pollution, all down. You know, where some, some people are doing, you know, no up lighting for more light pollution, all down lighting. You know, must amply present the building or just some general, like not where it's just like too hard, but it's just like general, you know, you know, I'm talking about some, just some general conditions like that? Just keep us from doing obnoxious things or nothing?
Yes, yes. And, and that's really how it's set up right now. I'll, I'll sort of, there's a nice little graphic in, in the zoning. So.
Okay. And then I'm not through either, Mayor, too. I got a couple of other things, but go ahead, Daniel. I'm sorry.
So, so like, like you're saying, sort of the down, down lining is sort of showing, you know, what type of, you know, fixtures that we're trying to see this, when we say non-cut-off, you know, it's trying to prevent, like I said, that light pollution, because of course businesses, they of course do need that for security and, 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 you know, trying to make, you know, so people can see the parking lot and all that stuff. So, so yes, we, we have the general standards in there for more of what you, you were saying as far as the, the lighting that's focused on producing it towards the ground rather than the light pollution. And this second part of your question, I'm sorry?
Okay. And then there's two other parts. I'm just taking a second here, but go back to where it talks about the beautiful buildings. And so in this articulation and stuff, I just want to talk about that for a minute. I mean, when people, when people on the, on the slide that beautiful buildings, when people said they wanted beautiful buildings. And, you know, what a beautiful building is, is what people see as beautiful buildings, if you think about it for a minute, I just want us all to think about this. If you look down a street and you, you're standing in the middle of the street and you look down the street and all you see is parking lots, all you see is parking lots down that street and cars, you know, on one picture. And then picture with me the next picture. The next picture is you see buildings up close to the street. And the way they look, and that's, that is what's called form. I mean, that's form-based code right there. But my point in this beautiful buildings and this articulations and all of that, and Daniel makes a good point on the articulation. But when the, when you, when you have the site plan right, the building setting right on the site, even an old building that you're rehabbing, if you work on, on creating more form, more things up against the street or you, and even in the big box shopping centers, we can, we can do things like that. If you, that's what I think people are talking about beautiful buildings. It's not as much the kind of brick on a building, although that's extra. But if you don't get the form right, if you don't get the placement on the site plan of buildings in the right place with the best of what you got. I'm not talking about going and tearing everything down and rebuilding, but doing the best you can, then the architecture don't even matter. So if you don't get that right, the scale and what Daniel's talking about, the articulation, if you don't get the site plan right, then you're going to have an ugly building, even if it's gold-plated. And so I'm curious as if there is some way to do like some architectural assistance review, maybe it's not an architectural committee, but maybe we would have some kind of just an architectural review of things, just to help people more, more than just telling them what to do, but more of a help of, of creating beautiful city. And I have, I've seen it worked really well where there are architectural review committees where, where things are beautiful. And I have one down the road a little ways. But for a city to do it, it's a little bit harder, but we have so little amount of land and building left that I think every building that's built is important. And every shopping center that's, that's rebuilt is important. And we're not trying to break the banks of landlords or investors or not trying to do that, but just simple, simple things, simple philosophy, simple things with scale, the right lighting, those things could make a huge difference for a little bit amount of money. I just wanted to say that. And then, then lastly, on the apartments, you know, if in many places where apartments cause problems is where you have, you know, 100 plus units in one place. But there's many places where apartments are beautiful, like in, like in Highland Park, where they're mixed in and other places where they're, where there's 20 units here and eight units here, you know, and they're owned by locals, you know, and they're, they're your, you know, they're, they're owned by locals and the people that rent them are locals. And then, then more of the, than less of the, the 200 unit apartments, tax credit, you know, whatever types of apartments come in, that's where you always see the problems and deterioration of high numbers of apartments in one places. But apartments spread out in many places to me really makes sense. And a lot of great cities, if you go to a lot of great cities, you'll see this a comment, this is a common thing there. And so that's my three comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Monty. Appreciate that input and giving me some things to think about as you were talking as well. Any other inputs either from your commissioners on P and Z or city council members? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Eric, I saw your hand up.
Yes, sir. Just real quick, in generally speaking, when it comes to the articulation in height or depth in a 3D form, is there anything that is mentioned about a combination of materials, not necessarily a specification, but a combination of, so we can avoid a wall of just complete ethos or truth of materials to where the combination would make sense if it was built traditionally or your masonry is below and then you change above that versus the opposite? I'm just asking a general question here because I find that materials can blend well together if it's done properly. What I would refer to as a truth of material.
There, great question, because we get that, because with the changes, changes in state law, what, what the, what the big change in state law was saying that we can't regulate the, the building materials. It's allowed in the building code, you basically get to have it on your building. And so that's been, that was a big change for, for all Texas cities, because we, we always used to have 100% masonry or providing different things. And so we can no longer go ahead and have those straight out regulations like that. So one of the, one of the more areas that has been debated, can you not necessarily say you must use this and that, but can you use a combination of different, different building materials? Currently, the way we have it worded is we don't sort of delve it into that area. We sort of have a more conservative approach, saying that we're just gonna, you know, we could see how people could question, you know, that as, you know, being a, a violation of what we can do now as part of that. But I mean, it's still, and this, this new law really hasn't been litigated here, here in the state. So, you know, what can cities still do as far as not prescribing the, the building materials, but just saying you gotta have a mixture or does something have to be consistent with, with something else? Is that prescribing that? So, so we are a little bit on the side of caution and we don't have a standard like that, saying it just has to be, you get to pick whatever you want, but it just has to be a combination of those.
Mr. Hager, I think you just came unmuted. You probably want to talk about that, that, that law that was passed during the last legislative.
Basically, Daniel articulated what the requirement is, but there is some legislation that has also been proposed this legislative session that may give us a little more control than we currently have as a result of the last legislative session. So that may go into whether you want to go ahead and move forward with public hearings or you want to wait. I don't suggest that, but I am following that very closely. So we'll keep you apprised of that as you move through the process and where that's going. So there, there may be some relief to address Mr. Pena's desires in that regard. Thank you.
Well, you know, short answer, Eric, the answer is no. We just can't do it. And going along, tagging on to what, what Monty said, if we had something like an architectural committee of citizens to say, how can we make this building look good, you know, if you have a beautiful building, maybe that could come into play. But in terms of specifying something in, in ordinance or in our, in zoning at the moment, it's legally impossible to do that.
There, there are, Mayor, just for a point of conversation, there is a provision in 211.003, the zoning statute in Texas says, in the case of designated areas in areas of historical, cultural, architectural importance and significance, the governing body may regulate construction, reconstruction, alteration and raising of buildings and other structures. To Daniel's point, it hasn't been litigated. And certainly those words mean something. And I know Councilman Anderson is very worried about downtown as well as our citizens are. So we may have some ability to do some things in that downtown area that you normally would not have in maybe certain other areas of town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other inputs, comments?
Mr. Zelka has his hand raised.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. Daniel, I had a couple of questions on the, on the hard copies at the library and the city hall on your earlier presentation slide.
Yes.
Do we know if there, anybody had checked those out and had any input?
As I, as I recall, and Erica, please correct me if I'm wrong. We, we didn't have anyone, as, as far as English and Spanish, we didn't have anyone fill it out in, in Spanish. And then I don't think we had any, I thought they were all done online. We didn't have any, any on the, actually, no one still picked one up and, and turned it in. I assume that's more COVID-related.
Okay, but it was just the survey. Wasn't the, was it the full presentation?
Oh, no, no, the full presentation was not, not at the, at the library. I mean, they could, I guess, access it at a computer, but.
Okay. Your articulation on your residential, can you go back to that slide?
Not residential.
Or non-residential, yeah.
I think it was the next slide.
Oh, for, for multi-family.
Multi-family. So your recreational areas include a space for community building, community uses such as, so this would be just examples of things that might be required or, or something that might fit into that the property developer could pick from? Kind of like a matrix of, of options and they could add what, what would be specifically of value to their project? Is that what that's saying?
That, that is correct. We'd have a menu, basically, that they got to, they would choose from. And we would outline feature, features like these.
Okay. And the revisions on page nine, the recommendations, were those the recommendations that you were in your future plans? Were these just the recommendations or did you have others that you were considering?
No, no, those, those were the two. And then just so everyone knows what, what page nine is referring to, I'm just having it on the screen. It, it's basically those two slides I'm showing about articulation and multi-family development. And since this was something that, that we had discussed with you, we were just seeing the results from the input, we were thinking, well, you know, can we just proactively present some stuff to you to say, if, if we think that this is the right way to address some of those, this would be a, a, a place we could start from.
Those were the questions, Mayor. And just, I guess from a survey point of view, we probably had great participation, but I wish we had better participation. That's just my comment in general on the, on the survey as far as how we go forward.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Appreciate that. So Daniel, why don't you go to your last slide again? So I think that what we've seen, based on the revisions, we all pretty well understand them. They work for what I, in terms of my personal feeling is, is what we're talking about with those articulations for both the non-residential and multi-family development. And we could be ready for a public hearing, not less than, less than a month away from here. That, I guess, looking at the way things are going, would have to be virtual as well. So my question there would be to Daniel and Erica, how effective would a public hearing be done virtually?
It would be, because they're, they are taking place like this right now. So we just go through the, the, the regular process of having, having the public hearing. But I, I think we might need to talk a little bit with staff about how they'd like to proceed with that. And, and we can, we can talk about that and then present something to you.
Yeah, might want to just do a little, I'm just thinking about considering doing a little research in terms of how much participation we would get in something of this importance to our city to be done virtually. And if the timing of it is right for the beginning in February, I guess it's what it boils down to. Or should we think of maybe something more in terms of March than, than early February? And I don't know the answer. I don't know the answer to that. I'm just throwing that out on the table for you all to take a look at. Yeah, Bob, I see your hand up.
Mayor, one of the things that I think, got to think about doing is setting the public hearing and maybe continuing it. I have more than one. Or take it in bites instead of trying to handle everything at once, take the first three chapters and then the last three chapters of the zoning ordinance. And we could also solicit written comments as well. That can be effective. Allow the public an opportunity to put in writing their concerns about those various sections. So there's, I, I want to offer you, you can get through this any way that you think that the public needs to participate. In addition to appearing at a Zoom meeting or a Teams meeting to do it in writing as well. We'll make sure those written comments can get addressed. And if we, if we get them ahead of time, then Daniel and Erica will have a chance to maybe either explain or maybe what the concerns are, so we don't have to make changes. Or we can incorporate those changes. The citizens may have a great suggestion. Daniel can put it in, into the right framework of the, of the ordinance. So you have an ability to consider a wide range of options. As long as we know what they are and that the right notices go out, we can accommodate the constraints that we have due to COVID. So.
Mayor, if, if I may, if the question is regarding the technology, I think we can make that work. We've done it in the past already before. So with, with a, with a public hearing and related to Zoom. So we, we can, we can certainly do that. I think the assumption that March is going to be back to normal is, I think, we need to, we need to think about that. I'm not sure when, when we'll be ready to, you know, go back to live meetings or have live meetings with the public that can attend. You know, I guess depending on how successful we are with the vaccine and everything else. But we can work with, with Daniel and the group on, on the technology part of that. And if it's, you know, not February or March, we can certainly work on that, too.
And, you know, Bob's comment about breaking it into chunks, this, this is voluminous. And it took us this long to get through it. Yeah, so that's, that's a good point, too. Mark, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, yeah. I like Bob's comment. I'm gonna add two additional ones with it. And that is, we have all of our commissioners and, and boards. And I must suggest that we ask first that those guys join this meeting, join that type of meeting first. And that's a, what is that, over 100 people or so? Or if you look at all the boards together? So that's one item that we need to get our board, people that's already, already on boards participating. And then secondly, it will require some type of expense, but mailing out postcards to some, a mass mail out postcards to everybody about the meeting itself. Because as we noticed before, there are so many people that's going to do social media, there's so many people that's going to get hard mail. And so if we're trying to reach a little bit higher population, it's going to require us to do something different throughout the presentation of what we're trying, what we're trying to do. So those, those things, I would say. those things, I would say, to reaching out to those. And I think uh, that this company really showed that again, on one of their presentation from a T M L conference, on how do you reach different generations? And so in our generations, we know that most of them are ones that are not social media.
And we have the ability to put it in water bills, and to put it in the weekly update that goes out as well. We could put it on the marquee. Um, so those, yeah, staff, if, you know, it's something for all of our staff and F and I to get together and look at in terms of how we get the most effective communication and participation available to us on this thing. Okay, so I'm gonna. I'm sorry?
Stand up.
Um, I didn't understand.
It was me.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Janet?
Um, I was just gonna say, because as far as the boards go, they all have a staff liaison that could tell the boards about this. And um, you know, it shouldn't be a requirement, it should be if they're interested in uh, the uh, redoing the zoning uh, ordinance. But uh, the staff could let them all know that this is going on. And that's the way that we could reach them is through their, when they have their meetings to tell them. Because you have some people that are interested and some that just aren't. And their area of expertise and interest is where they are. Because I, I told some people about it and asked them, and they're like, oh, okay, uh huh. They, you know, they didn't want to, they didn't want to do it. So, it's to a zone.
Yeah, the invitation from the Raison could be good as well. It's a good idea. Yeah, Greg, had your hand up?
Yeah, yes, sir. Thank you. Um, I, if we could split the articles out into multiple meetings, we have very low participation in public comments at our meetings with the Zoom. So my recommendation, I think from our panel, could be i- if we specifically want to talk about certain articles prior to a meeting, in addition to our public comment period, maybe that's an opportunity to give anyone time to um, speak on a specific topic. And um, and then those notes can be taken back. And I definitely like the written method that the attorney had talked about, because um, it, there's obviously some business owners that may have a specific concern, and that gives them that opportunity to really make sure their concerns are are um, identified, or a residential person, that they have those opportunities to get those comments in. Because like I said, the public comment periods, our participation is very low. I don't know how other boards are, maybe that's just the way it is. But I I would like to see a lot of participation for this going forward, because once we have this in in effect, if it passes, um, you know, it could be changed, but it it'd be something that requires more effort down the road. Thank you, sir.
Uh, and our P I O may have some expertise available, terms of input on this as well. So I think maybe we look to Alex, find out what he knows in terms of getting part maximum participation. It's not an easy subject. It's a lot of stuff, and it's a lot of information that's very much in detail. And for me, it was a massive amount of new education, which it may be for a lot of our citizens as well. So with all that put into the, uh, you know, the machinations of understanding what kind of response we can get, we'll do our very, very best. I'm very confident in F and I, and in our staff, and and thinking about those kinds of things to get the maximum possible participation and using the.
And one thing that we found out in these meetings is that unless you have something that you're upset about, when somebody's upset, they show up. If they're not upset, everything's fine, they don't show up. And that's just the way it is. Yeah, it is. If they've got a beef, you'll hear from them. They'll be there. If they don't, and that's kind of what I found when I was saying, hey, you want to get involved? And they're like, no, you know?
Yeah, it's the old axiom that silence is consent.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Well, you know, I guess we'll go ahead and leave it at the February eighth, twenty twenty one, um, aspect, and look at February sixteenth, twenty one, twenty twenty one. That may change for city council, depending on kind of what kind of responses the P and Z gets. Uh, but as of now, I think we can go ahead and and put those dates in our calendars. Okay. What else you got, Daniel?
I think, I think that we'll, uh, we'll, we'll work with staff on on some of the, some of the elements that we just talked about with with the public hearings in the in the best way. Of course, uh, incorporating everybody's comments to um, move forward on that. And just because, because I know we we did a, a good effort to get the word out and get people involved in the virtual open house. And then, of course, it's, it's, you know, it is that difficult time with the the current state of, state of affairs with with COVID and everything. So we'll work with staff to uh, get that lined out for you and and move forward.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Uh, I will call adjournment of city council. Our timestamp on that is six fifty six. Greg, if you want to call it on P and Z?
Also call in a German at six fifty six, sir.
To everyone, thank you very much for your time and participation. We appreciate you. Good night.